Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out tonight. Today is day number 35 of a 60-day public comment period that runs through June 10th. So there'll still be plenty of time for residents to engage with city council on this zone-in update after tonight's hearing, but I appreciate the robust turnout that we've had here in council chambers and certainly, hopefully, additional folks watching online. This is the first of two public hearings we'll be having on this proposed zone-in update. The next will be on Wednesday, May 28th, again, here back at City Hall to review the public comments and changes that have been made to the proposals. That's the topic of tonight's hearing. Before we begin tonight, I want to thank everyone for their work on getting ready for today's hearing. Certainly, the zone-in team led by project manager Louis Teba, Department of Building and Zoning Services Director Scott Messer, Tony Sellebrizzi, who I forget your title, but you're just, you know, one of our delightful humans over in BZS, so thanks for being here. Certainly, Chief Zoning Official Shannon Pine, James Cartier from City Attorney's Office, or, I'm sorry, James Monroe, from the City Attorney's Office, my bad. And I don't know if I'm missing anyone else, but I certainly also want to thank my staff, Annie McDonald, Kevin McCain, and Ariel Garrett. Also, I want to pause and acknowledge my fellow council colleagues that are here tonight, Councilmember Deokhauer, Councilmember Beatty, Councilmember Weich, and Council President Harden. Want to also thank the council zone-in team as well, in addition to the CTV members, our CTV staff and members of the public, again, for taking time to be here, and those that are maybe tuning in virtually tonight about the proposed zoning code updates. Again, we are focused tonight on the 161 corridor in the Northland area and potential updates to our current zoning code. So just to emphasize, our old zoning code is Title 33, so you may hear some different numbers that are thrown around here tonight. Title 33 is the old zoning code, which we're trying to move away from, but we are considering some changes to that old code as we continue to move forward. And then the new zoning code, which is Title 34, which is the main subject of tonight's hearing, and that is ultimately the code that we created last summer as we went through the first phase of the zone-in process. As I mentioned earlier, this hearing is available to be livestreamed on CTV and certainly council's Facebook and YouTube pages. If anyone wants to go back and check out this hearing afterwards, you're welcome to get back on the city's YouTube channel, which this event will be posted there later on. Again, the purpose of tonight's hearing is to hear an overview of what's been proposed by the administration, to hear public feedback on this proposal. I know that many folks in our community are interested in hearing about the next phase of zone-in, and certainly want to allow folks to talk a little bit about the difference between phases and updates. And here, mainly, we're here to talk about an update, again, to the first phase. As we're still working through that second phase, the next big chunk of rezoning efforts or modernization efforts here in Columbus, those decisions are still being contemplated at the city right now, really thinking through the areas of the city that that next phase will target, and certainly, the types of zoning districts that will be created for that next phase. As I mentioned, last summer, Columbus City Council took the first major step by passing the first phase of zone-in, which modernized our outdated zoning code for the first time in nearly 70 years. Phase 1 has already demonstrated how targeted rezoning efforts can help to unlock housing opportunities, streamline development, and lay the foundation for walkable, vibrant neighborhoods in Columbus. In that first phase, we had prioritized corridors that we believe were ready for investment and already aligned with transit infrastructure investments and based upon positive feedback. That is one of the reasons why this update is here before us tonight, because the 161 area certainly fits those criteria. We've also heard from community leaders, many of which that are here tonight, particularly from the Northland Community Council, that Northland's ready for some of these changes. And I appreciate the advocacy of folks during that first phase to advocate for this next corridor to be brought forward sooner than later. That is one of the reasons why we wanted to bring an update to that first phase sooner than later, rather than waiting until additional phases down the line. And again, want to appreciate those folks in the Northland community that advocated for these. We know that neighborhood is home to diverse and dynamic communities, and adding to this vital quarter is now a matter of fairness and allows us to have smart planning to ensure that all communities across Columbus have the opportunity to grow more sustainably and more thoughtful. Columbus City Council has always consistently prioritized rural housing, mobility, and inclusive growth, and it's my belief that including 161 now strengthens our commitment as we move towards continuing to modernize our zoning code in an effort for equity and economic opportunity for these particular areas in Columbus as we move, again, towards additional rezonings in the future. With that, I want to pause and turn the mic over to my partner in good here, Council President Harden, who is a huge champion of these efforts as we move through the first phase and as we continue these efforts into the years to come. Council President?
Well, thank you, Chair Dorrance. Thank you for your leadership. Thank you to the department, to Director Messer and his team, who faithfully steered us through zone-in, the first engagement of zone-in, and what I like is that the work continues. And I just want to thank everyone. I want to thank the neighbors and the community. I think that that's the biggest part of this story of how we got here and why we are here, is because the neighbors on 161 advocated and pushed for us to be here. We still know that this corridor is one that has opportunity for more jobs, more housing, more economic development, more community. And it is so fitting that the Northland community would be the one that raised their hands and said, "Let's do it here." So we're grateful to partner with you. We look forward to being a part of this listening process and then acting shortly thereafter. So I want to thank my colleagues. Thank you again, Mr. Chair, and look forward to the process continuing.
Thank you, Council President. Want to pause and see if my other council colleagues have any comments they'd like to make at the start of the hearing. Seeing none, I did want to, again, we're talking about two different public hearings on this update. As the Council President mentioned, when we went through this in the first phase, we had thousands of comments, both on the website, which is columbus.gov/zoneinupdate. We had written testimony, we had folks testifying at the public hearings, and there were changes that were made to the legislation and to the map based upon that community engagement. I fully expect there likely to be changes that are made or proposed based upon the community engagement that we received, both here tonight and through that online tool for folks to be able to engage with us. But it is very, very important to have folks be able to provide that kind of feedback as this council has. Took that very seriously in the first phase of zone-in, and my expectation that we'll continue to do so as we move into the future, as this becomes sort of a normal framework in which we're continuing to modernize our zoning and land use efforts to make sure that we don't wait another 70 years before we tackle this giant project again. So with that, I do want to ask that the Director of Building and Zoning Services, Director Scott Messer, again, who played an integral role in the first phase of zone-in and certainly playing that same role here today. So Director Messer, want to turn it over to you for some opening comments.
Good evening, President Protem Dorrance, President Harden, and other members of council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight. I also want to iterate my thanks to both you and your team, President Protem Dorrance, as well as other council members and their teams. It's been a nice collaboration to be able to work together. It's a very complex zone-in project that we're working on, so very thankful for that collaboration. I'd also like to thank the team that's here with me tonight. They've all worked very, very hard, and we're just beginning, really, to complete the entirety of zone-in, as you mentioned, council member, with the future phases coming up. Thus far, you mentioned Phase 1. It has been a big success. I just wanted to highlight that, you know, in addition to the numerous small businesses that have benefited already, we've seen many housing projects moving forward. Right now, we have over 1,000 units that have been proposed along the corridors. So we have seen quite the impact from zone-in Phase 1, and that's why we're excited to be adding the 161 parcels that we're talking about adding now, along with some of the other code changes that have been proposed. I'd also like to thank the public and recognize the fact that, from the get-go, we felt that good communication, feedback, interaction with the public was going to be a hallmark, really, of this whole process and to make it successful. And so far, I'm very pleased with the feedback and all of the communication that has occurred from citizens from all parts of the city. We do have Louis Teba, Zone-In Project Manager, Shannon Pine, who you both mentioned, who you mentioned, council member, as our chief zoning official that'll be presenting a summary overview of the proposed changes tonight. I have some of the other members of my team that you mentioned earlier that are here and ready to answer any questions, so thanks for having us.
Thank you, Director. Appreciate you being here tonight. I do want to now turn it over to our project manager. So if you were with us for the first phase, you may remember Kevin Wheeler, who sort of shepherded that first phase through. He has since retired, and we have turned the torch over to Mr. Louis Teba, who's doing a great job as we get this project started. So Louis, floor is yours.
Sure. Thank you. So President Protem Dorrance, President Harden, members of council, thanks for the opportunity here to talk some more about zone-in and give you an update on the project as it's going so far. We're continuing the work of zone-in, as Director Messer indicated, and that we're going to update the remainder of the city's broken and outdated zoning code. So as you know, Phase 1, let's see what we have right here, Phase 1 was essentially, we did 140 miles of corridors, we did six districts, we did 12,000 parcels, and we did 62 focus areas. And we based that off of the following criteria. So we looked at mixed-use recommendations, code of bus routes, commercial zoning overlays, link-us corridors, commercial and multi-zoning unit zoning, and site-specific circumstances. However, if you look at the map, there you'll see 161 was not included. And the reasoning was that we looked at that portion of the corridor there, and it didn't meet the criteria 100% for Phase 1. Now, the community did reach out to us afterwards, and they, during this 60-day public comment period, and they indicated to us that they would like us to look into making 161 part of the zone-in project. And so we've been with a, doing a public outreach sessions with the community. We've gone to all of the Northland Community Council meetings. We've gone to their zone-in subcommittee hearings. And essentially, we've heard from the community that they feel that 161 is ready for zone-in. We went through, and we did this listening and briefing tour, and there's a couple changes since April that have allowed us to reconsider this for zone-in. One, we have improved code of transit service along the corridor. There have been upgrades to pedestrian connectivity. The city is currently working on a mixed-use path with bus shelters instead of just the individual bus signs that we have right now. Right now, we have signs in grass, and that's getting upgraded to bus shelters. And they're doing roundabout work on some of the service roads as well. And so we determined that these areas were appropriate for a community activity center and for urban general 2. So here you can see, this is the areas of 161 that were previously rezoned during Phase 1. You can see that there at the intersections, we have regional activity center and community activity center extending north on Cleveland Avenue. However, the majority of 161 was not addressed in this phase. These are the areas that we're proposing for rezoning. The vast majority of it is community activity center, and we do have a small area of urban general 2 as well on the map. These were determined based off of the parcel sizes, the depths of the parcels. You can see that small portion there that is UGN 2 is made up of smaller parcels, and so UGN 2 is more appropriate in that area. And overall, we're doing 165 parcels. We have 2 and 1/2 miles of corridor. And the parcels to the east of Cleveland Avenue, originally, we did not have those in our scope, but based off of initial community feedback, it was represented to us that they would like us to take a look at that, and we looked into it, and based off of the size of the parcels, we felt that community activity center was part of that. So I just want to stress that this has been a very community-led effort. The community reached out to us initially, and we have been working with the community to take their feedback into account as we go through this process. And with the, if this is adopted, you can see this is what it will look like. You'll see those regional activity centers will be connected via CAC along 161. So we have done some additional engagement as well. We've been doing email blasts to our zone-in stakeholder list, which is about 3,000 individuals. 49% of those have opened the emails, and we have had a click rate of 3.6% off of that. Additionally, we've been doing social media through the plannings in Department of Development's Facebook page, Instagram, and LinkedIn, and as well as through the City of Columbus's council, I believe, Facebook page. We've reached 11,000 individuals. We've had 143 reactions, and 70 people have clicked through. So the numbers are pretty good with our social media engagement. The survey that's been conducted since March 11th, these are the results. We've had 235 completed surveys. The individuals that are taking the survey, 10.2% are property owners, 8.5% work or operate a business on 161, and the other 92% live on, near, or visit destinations on 161. And how do they choose to respond? Our survey has two different ways that you can take the survey. You can take the survey generally, you can just respond to the entire project as a whole, or you can actually decide to comment on individual portions of the map that we're presenting. So you can see here, we had 71% commented on the map in general, and 29% commented on a specific area of the map. So the two questions, what do you think about the proposal as a whole? 166 respondents, where 91% support the proposal. 99% were other, they wanted to make additional comments. What do you think about the proposed district for this area? So we had 68% people who were commenting on specific districts on the map. 33% supported the proposed districts. 62%, they chose other, they wanted to comment. And 5% said they prefer another district for this area. Surprisingly, four of those comments were, they were requesting a higher density in that area. So in general, 100 respondents fully support the proposal. 76 generally support it. And then we had about 58 that left comments. 42 of those comments were specifically related to Penn Kater Homes and Post Lake area, so that's where we're seeing a large number of our comments. That does it for the 161 portion. I'd be happy to answer any questions, or I can hand it off to Shannon Pine, who'll talk about the other ordinances related to this.
Mr. Teba, could you talk a little bit about, so again, we went through the first phase of zone-ins. We created six different zoning districts.
Correct.
Could you talk a little bit about the density or intensity of the districts that have been proposed in this update compared to the ones that were available to be utilized?
Previously?
Yes.
Oh, so along this corridor is mostly just commercial, which has very limited residential density available to it. It also has height limits. The commercial along this corridor, the majority of the height limit's going to be 35 feet, which is the general commercial districts. What we're proposing here with community activity center, community activity center has a base height of five stories, and you can get an additional bonus to seven, so five or seven. And then the urban general 2, the UGN 2, that is four stories. There is no bonus to that, but it does allow for definitely more dense building style than what would be allowed just based on the commercial that's currently zoned right there. UGN 2 is very similar to UGN 1. UGN 2 is more for kind of suburban settings, so it does have additional setbacks, side setbacks. It's made more for detached housing style. UGN 1 is more for an attached. And this was chosen for this area because of the suburban nature of 161, and those parcels, specifically, they're single-family houses right now. So it was viewed that UGN 1 would be too intense for that area. But then the community activity center, that's very, in keeping with what the zoning was recommended for in other areas of the city, in certain areas, it's specifically for larger parcels, not as large as the regional activity center, but still, it does have a good amount of development potential. So we don't have a specific, I apologize, we don't have a specific number on what this proposal would permit, but definitely higher, significantly higher than what is currently allowed on the base zoning.
So higher than what's currently allowed, but still less so than some of the more intense districts that are now available in 34, where you go up to 12 stories, for example?
Yeah, there's no UCT. UCT, that is going to be five to eight, so similar to the, well, five to seven UCT, but there's no urban core, which is 12 to 16. So there's no urban core proposed for this area and no further regional activity center. Those were already chosen by the nodes in Phase 1.
Great, thank you. Any questions from council members for Mr. Teba before I turn over to our chief zoning official? Ms. Pine?
Good evening. Got to turn my mic on. Good evening, Council Protem Dorrance and Council President Harden and members of council. I'm going to briefly describe the zoning code updates that we plan to bring to council with the zone-in Phase 1 update for the 161 corridor, and also explain a couple zoning map corrections. The first update is the opt-in mechanism. So Title 33, Chapter 3310, it's going to be revised to allow for an opt-in mechanism for parcels which are contiguous to Title 34 mixed-use corridor districts. Currently, only city council can authorize rezoning of districts from a Title 33 district into a Title 34 mixed-use district. So this change would allow owners to, and applicants, to file rezoning applications with the Department of Building and Zoning Services for any Title 33 district property that is contiguous to a property in a Title 34 district. Those applications will be processed according to the provisions of Chapter 3310 with recommendations from city departments, the Applicable Area Commission or Civic Association, and the Development Commission. And the rezoning ordinance would be considered for final passage by city council during a council zoning agenda, so just like rezonings are handled now. There will also be updated policy language developed by the Planning Division to provide guidelines for consistency for staff review and also ensure that we're promoting compatible development. So for example, if the property does abut a UCT district, like in this example, we might look at it, and maybe that parcel goes very far into the neighborhood. Maybe it's a very deep parcel, so we might have some policies where we might suggest, like maybe a less intense mixed-use district during the staff review process. So that's kind of what we're envisioning with that. Next, we've got, we've got quite a bit of, not, they're minor, but it seems like a lot of just some updates to Title 34, and I'll just briefly go over some of what we're doing. We need to revise a couple general definitions and measurements for clarifications within the district standards themselves. We're looking at revising the ground floor depth, which is required 12 feet of active space along the front of a building. We're running into some problems with corner properties and where required utilities have to be, like, for example, the fire department requires the access to, for the hose right there, and if that's not allowed to be in that 12 feet, we're going to have a little bit of a problem. We're also adding some prohibitions on new chain-link fence and razor or barbed wire in these districts, as that's not an extremely pedestrian-friendly component. We're adding some fence and wall height restrictions in front of the buildings. We're clarifying some bicycle parking requirements. We are removing or relocating certain allowable uses in our use table. We're discussing some potential clarifications on development and design standards for secondary and accessory buildings, and we have some clarifications for pre-existing uses and pre-existing buildings. And this just all makes my zoning clearance staff job a little bit easier when we're running into some issues where we're not quite sure, like, the new code maybe didn't describe it the way it needs to be described. We're also updating some of our supplemental district standards that are for applicability modules, frontage type standards, and large site standards. We're also tweaking Article G for general site development standards for graphics and the affordable height bonus, only to replace the code with the process that we intend to do. Then we have two little map corrections. You may recall with Phase 1, there was a giant list of the 12,300 parcels. Well, two of those parcels were missing from the list. How does that happen? I don't know. But these two parcels here should have been in the community activity center for the property on the left and the UGN 1 district for the property on the right. So they were shown on the maps during the draft and the comment period. They just, the parcel list just had them missing, so it's just a cleanup matter. But that's really all that we have coming before you in the way of code edits, map updates, and I'm happy to get into the weeds on any of those if you have more questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Pine. Any questions, my colleagues, for Chief Pine at this time? Councilmember Weich?
One, thank you for the overview of those additional changes. Just wanted to clarify a question on like the opt-in mechanism. So for this example you have presented here, those yellow parcels to the right would still be notified that a potential change was coming. Residents would still have an ability to provide feedback, correct?
Correct. So they would have three opportunities for public feedback during the area commission or civic association meeting, then a development commission. Our office sends notice for that meeting, and then at city council, notice would be sent.
Thank you, council member. Council President?
Yes, my question, my question is about the opt-in mechanisms as well, and maybe I misunderstood in earlier discussions I had about this. How is this mechanism different from what someone would need to do in a normal rezoning?
It's not different at all. It's just the code is being updated to allow them to file a rezoning application as any other developer would.
And the reason, the reason I raise this is when the original maps came out, you know, there were several members of the community that, they went to the zone-in center, they made comments, and they're showing, hey, I own these two parcels right next to one another, and we're trying to do something. And doesn't it make sense that they be added into the original maps? And they were told, you know, we can't start a new 60-day process and, you know, everything like that. Some of these, in my experience and feedback that I've heard from people, it just made sense for them to be in, so I understand that. And so I see that we're trying to, in some ways, right a wrong, but it seems to me, and I thought the direction that things may have been headed, that we were going to have some type of expedited process for these situations that probably should have been there in the first place. And so am I misunderstanding that this is essentially just a rezoning where folks, you know, they were very happy, they had these parcels on the corridor, they're put into this, you know, new, these new districts and everything, it's going to open up some opportunities for them to partner with others, et cetera. And then they have this other part that wasn't put in, and if they're going to have to go through this full rezoning process of going to area commission and going this and doing that, you know, the right that occurred and the new opportunity which it opened up where they're not going to an area commission, they may not even have to spend as much lawyer time and other things like that, and it almost seems like it's setting it back. And so I don't know if we're too far along, but what I would like to see, and I know some other people would like to see, is a process that would make it easier for folks that are in these situations. I mean, this isn't thousands and thousands and thousands of parcels, but there's certain ones that I'm aware of that just makes sense that we would have some type of easier process, especially when we're talking common ownership, not some situation, hey, if I buy this lot next to me. No, I already own it. We're trying to put something together to move the city forward.
I can address part of that. With the way, the process as it is now with the 60-day comment period.
Sure.
These districts are unrestricted districts. There's not a complex CPD with a site plan, a council variance with a site plan. There's really not much. There's really not much to review. It's a district, an unrestricted district that you're developing under Title 34. So it should be fairly quick. It should be a fairly quick process, probably two to three months for an unrestricted district to go through staff review, area commission, development commission and council.
So the front part of their lot, and I'm calling it lot, not necessarily the numeric parcel, because it's in the Zone In, would not have to go to area commission. But then the back part, the back part, because they have to go through this rezoning process, would thereby, you know, potentially allowing an area commission or others to block the whole progress of a potential development. Would that be the case?
They make a recommendation. So it's the Development Commission's job to evaluate the recommendations of staff and the area commission, and then its council's job to evaluate all three recommendations that come through.
Okay. Would you consider this a special circumstance where maybe the department would have designated individuals in the department that those that fall into this circumstance could go to to help them shepherd them through this process?
We already have that. We have an accelerated residential project manager. And already, we're doing that with all of our residential zonings that are greater than four units, so that it would go through that same process. As soon as the application is filed, it's prepared for staff review, it's sent out to the area commission immediately. So that saves about a month off the process, right on the front end. But we've definitely, Director Masser and I have talked about, you know, maybe there is some quicker process, but to just get the process going now, I think we need to just write the code to allow the standard rezoning, and then perhaps we can look at a way that maybe we can shorten it even further. And I think we'll also have parts of the city as we do our Phase Two analysis. We'll probably find other areas of the city where these mixed-use districts or maybe new ones that we create would work, and we would go through this, the zoning process.
All right. Look forward to those discussions.
Thank you, Councilmember. Chief Pine, I want to pull that thread a little bit more because again, I think the point that Councilmember Beatty is making is right now, we have two different zoning processes that we're sort of talking about generally at the same time. You know, we're here talking about Title 34 changes in which we're rezoning things here, but then we're talking about this sort of gray area, not really gray area, but before we would not allow anyone to bring a Title 34 rezoning. But now we're saying, under this, opt-in, measure you could. And I just wanted to sort of maybe ask a question out loud and see if, this is illustrative to folks that maybe, you know, listening here. You know, typically, when we're going through a rezoning, there's a project for like the area commission to review. You know, I would like to change the zoning from this zoning to that zoning, so that would allow me to build X, Y and Z, which I can't do with the current rezoning. You know, when we talk about allowing a, you know, an individual that owns multiple parcels that are connected, and some of them being Title 33 and some of them being Title 34, they would not need to have a project or a proposal for an area commission to react to. They could simply just say, you know, I have all these parcels that were rezoned in Zone In One, so they're Title 34, but I have a connected parcel that's Title 33. You know, for me to figure out what I want to do with this whatsoever, it would make sense for me to want to bring that into Title 34 to sort of harmonize them together. And then at that point, they would be able to, you know, move forward with a building project that would be allowed under that new zoning, you know, district. And I think one of the things we talk about oftentimes when these things move through the process is that lots of folks are reacting to the proposal itself, not necessarily the zoning district. So I guess just saying out loud, just to ask the question directly, someone would not need a project that would be sort of animating an event for, that would necessitate, I want to change this 33 to this 34, correct?
Correct. I think if they know what they want to build, they would probably be happy to share that with both staff and the community group, just so that they have a sense of what it's going to look like. And with some of the Planning Division policies, they're hoping to, you know, for example, if the parcel was on the other side of the alley, maybe they would kind of move the alley to still have that division of where the development is and the separation into the neighborhood. So there's different things that Planning Division is thinking about also to make sure that the development, that a buts single unit would still work.
Sure. And again, you know, this is a little bit of a mindset shift for Columbus, right? Because our zoning code is so outdated, virtually, if you want to build anything across the city, you typically would need a rezoning or variance, and I think that is one of the reasons why we started the zoning process is that we have, we basically do, you know, individual zoning after individual zoning. And I think we talked a lot about during the Phase One process of, hey, that maybe is not the best way for us to approach this and sort of one-off after one-off after one-off. Let's take a much more holistic view of what sort of development looks like in the city. Let's build a lot of protections in on the front end and just sort of be thoughtful with folks about what could be there in the future, not necessarily a specific project or a specific type of housing or development. It's more of, in this type of zoning district, you can do these things. You would have this height limit, you would have these design standards, many of which did not exist on the old zoning code. So I think when we're sort of talking about the ability to sort of move from a 33, you know, zoning, the old code to a new code, it's about having flexibility built into there, but also, you know, some safeguards as well, too. Because we don't want folks to be able to build whatever they want, wherever they want, whenever they want. We want to have some reasonable restrictions within there. But to move more towards a process in which there's flexibility within that district itself, and folks can react to it and propose things, and as long as it fits, it fits, versus, you know, a proposal that, you know, requires a rezoning, requires a variance, requires all these things that are almost, are individual to that one parcel or two parcels versus, hey, what is, what kind of development do we think is appropriate, literally, say, the subject tonight, all along 161, right? We're wanting to take a holistic view of this entire area versus what do we think is good on this parcel or that parcel. So I just want to make it a little bit more clear for folks about, when we talk about this opt-in, it's more about, you know, what could happen generally on that parcel versus this is the thing that we're asking the community to react to, which is very, very, very different compared to how we've normally approached zoning, both as a city council, as a department, as area commissioners, as development commissioners, as, you know, members of the public. Any other questions from councilmembers of the department at this point? Councilmember Beatty?
Yeah. And did you say that, again, only contiguous lots, parcels, that you would be considering some type of distance limitation?
There's already setbacks built into the districts when they abut residential. So those would still, whatever the base district that the applicant is requesting, those standards would be in place.
From the front corridor lot to?
Most of it's to the back. When you abut residential, the step back for the building height, if you're close to a single unit residential in a 35-foot height district, you have to step in from the back and put more of your height towards the front of the site. There may be side or rear setbacks that you would have to follow on that parcel that's potentially to the rear of the parcel that already is in the corridor.
Thank you, Councilmember. And Chief Pine, I also just want to point out aloud, when we talk about the first phase had 12,300-plus parcels, we had two numbers that got wrong, so kudos to your team. It's a pretty good batting average right there, so we never will have any mistakes with things getting left out. But thinking the herculating task that was to get all of those parcel numbers correctly, literally so that we could pass those here at this body, you know, we don't like having mistakes, but that's, I just wanted to point out, that's quite a bit. And the other thing, before we get to public comment, I do want to make sure that folks that are joining us here. So that first phase had 12,300-plus parcels that were included. And I know, Louis, is the best question for you, how many parcels are part of this proposed update?
165.
So much smaller compared to the first phase. Again, so when we talk about the differences of phases versus updates, would you mind just maybe providing a little bit of that so that if folks are learning about Zone In for the first time, and I keep saying updates and then also saying phases, you just tell us a little bit about what we mean by that, just so that folks can follow along?
Absolutely. I mean, it's a technicality, but yes, we use it interchangeably. So basically, the phases, Phase One, then we will have future phases as we work on the city. When we are creating new districts for the city, so in Phase One, we created six new districts, we're calling that a phase, right? We're going to have large areas of the city where we go out and talk to the community. We give them, you know, a framework of zones, we give them a boundary, and we give them these new districts, and we seek their feedback on it. An update, we're forcing updates as we do our phases. When we get done with one of our phases and we give it some time to, you know, to kind of settle down, we'll look and we'll say, okay, are there additional areas where perhaps we missed? Or perhaps like with 161, there've been changes on the ground that make those areas, you know, that make them appropriate to be included in the phase. So, and if there's, you know, code changes, kind of cleanup work that we need to do in any of the titles, Title 33, Title 34, those are what we're calling updates. So 161 is an update because we're not creating any new districts. We're using the districts from Phase One, and we're just applying those districts to a new area of the map, so it's just a map update.
Thank you very much for that. And again, I just want to sort of right-size when we talk about the amount of things that are before council right now as it pertains to the map. Now, we do have several pieces of sort of policy that are going to come along with this, that are other pieces of legislation. Some you've heard about tonight, others we're still working through right now, that we'll be able to talk more about in the coming weeks and months. But just want to make sure that we're all sort of on the same page, because we have a number of different sort of things that are moving through the body that ultimately City Council will take a vote on. So with that, want to definitely move to the public testimony portion of our hearing. We have received some written testimony, which has been provided to all the offices. We also will have public speakers here tonight. We are, again, in the midst of a 60-day public comment period, so again, if you have not gotten onto columbus.gov/zoningupdate to provide written comment, you're able to do that. You're also able to submit, again, written testimony to my office in addition to the public comment here. As I mentioned, we'll have another public hearing in May. I believe we have about nine different public speakers here tonight. I think we had 10, but we had one individual percent their speaker slip. So I think most folks heard this before we started to get going. So typically, for City Council, we allow folks three minutes. So I will call folks up individually. I try to practice Midwestern politeness, so I will try not to cut you right off at three minutes. If you rat that mark, I'll ask you to try and conclude as quickly as you can, just to be respectful of everyone's time. So with that, I want to invite the first public speaker, is Mr. Matthew Finnegan. Mr. Finnegan, welcome to council. And I do want to say, if I do pronounce your name incorrectly, I do apologize for that. If you want to restate it here, just to get it right for the record, I'd appreciate that. So, but I will do my best. Mr. Finnegan, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Pro Tem Dorans. Thank you, council members, for coming tonight. We appreciate it. I'm Matthew Finnegan. I'm the president of the Pen Cator Association. When we had that map up earlier tonight of the Zone In proposals, what we're talking about is all the way at the end of 161, right up against Worthington. In fact, Worthington is in front of that stretch of 161 as well as to the west. So we're those little lots. We do not oppose the rezoning of the, of the commercial properties that are currently on there, the Shell gas station and the three office buildings. We know that's coming. We are suggesting Urban General Two for that, for a number of reasons. It's more consistent with where we are in that part, and it's less pressure on the lake. Post Lake, which is a spring-fed lake that's existed for 100 years, and the Pen Cator addition, which is the group of 33 homes that are around that lake, is a one-of-a-kind property. There isn't anything else like it in Franklin County. We have taken care of that lake for 100 years. It is in great condition. And what's going on with the Zone In proposal, we're not sure why, but for some reason, they grabbed the six single-family residential lot or properties that are on the north end of the lake, and they attached it to these new districts. And what that will do, and so we're looking at this presentation right here. When you look at the exhibits, when you look at Exhibit D, that is the way things are currently zoned. And when you look at Exhibit E, that's what Zone In Columbus would do. And when you pull those six single-family residential lots in, you are pulling the entire north end and northeast shore of the lake into a situation where you can have seven-story buildings. When that happens, and we'll have other people talk about the effects of that, when that happens, you will ultimately destroy the lake. It will just happen. It won't be 33 owners of the lake anymore taking care of the lake. There will be these giant properties that are on the lake, and we've detailed the problems that would arise from that. So all we're, we support Zone In Columbus, we support the changes. All we're saying is for those six single-family residential zoned lots to lead, to take those back out of the proposal, leave them exactly the way they are, and then see how the development goes from there. That way, we'll be able to save the lake. The final thing I want to say is we have, we've invited everybody to come out to the lake to meet and to walk that area with us. It's not a big area at all. And so that stands, and Councilman De Akker, you've agreed to come, and Council Pro Tem. So, but I do extend it to everybody. Just give me a call. My name and number's on there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Finnegan. Looking forward to that visit. The next speaker we have to come for council is Mr. Glenn Tumala. Is Glenn not here? Please, okay. Please let the record reflect that Mr. Glenn Tumala was not here. Next speaker to come for council is Ms. Monica Bax. Ms. Bax, welcome to council.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. My name is Monica Bax, and tonight I'm here as a representative of Friends of the Lower Olentangie Watershed. I'm here to express FLOW's concerns regarding the proposed rezoning of residential properties in the area surrounding Post Lake and Rush Run. As a FLOW board member and water resources engineer, I ask the City Council to reconsider the proposed changes for the following reasons. First and foremost, the environmental impact on both Rush Run and Post Lake. Rush Run and Post Lake are crucial natural resources that have already been impacted by increased development in the surrounding areas. FLOW has worked extensively to protect and improve the water quality and natural habitat within these areas. However, the proposed rezoning threatens to exacerbate existing issues, including increased stormwater runoff, flooding and water pollution. Additionally, there are stormwater management concerns due to the proposed rezoning to a Community Activity Center. This will raise significant concerns about stormwater management. The increase in impervious surfaces from high-density development will lead to greater runoff and potential flooding downstream, particularly affecting Worthington neighbors near Bush Boulevard. It is crucial that developers be required to install adequate stormwater retention systems to mitigate these impacts, as well as consider practices such as trash racks be incorporated to reduce the likelihood of flooding and litter downstream. Finally, FLOW is concerned about the lack of tree planting requirements in the proposed zoning codes. Currently, I believe it's the CAC and the RAC zones that have tree planting requirements, but the draft code mentions deciduous trees without specifying their statures. FLOW would recommend that large-stature native trees be planted to provide maximum shade and support the local food web. Our primary concern is that the area will end up with small to medium trees, which will make it difficult to reach the city's 40% tree canopy cover goal. Additionally, we would like to see clarification on which department will be responsible for monitoring that tree planting requirements are met, particularly within parking lots. There seems to be a lack of adherence to this requirement currently, and we would like to verify that these requirements will be enforced. In conclusion, FLOW supports the requests made by the Post Lake Association to remove the six single-family residential properties adjacent to the north edge of Post Lake from the high-density zoning areas to ensure that the water quality is protected. This action will prevent- that the water quality is protected. This action will prevent further environmental degradation, reduce impacts directly related to stormwater runoff, and preserve the quality of life in addition to the green space for this one small piece of the 161 corridor. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you being here. Uh, the next speaker to come for council is Mr. Jared Cape. Mr. Cape, welcome back to council. Floor is yours, sir. Welcome back.
Thank you for having me. Appreciate every member of council being here, as well as the wonderful staff who has worked on Zone In. Uh, for a little context, I am a resident of the Short North. I'm, uh, representing myself. I'm the secretary for the Civic Association in the Short North, and I generally support the map updates that have been discussed here. I mostly wanted to focus on other parts of phase one, as we talk about, um, kind of some of the changes that have been discussed here, for policy changes, as well as what does Zone In look like in the future phases, uh, just as we're kind of getting things kicked off. So I think the first thing I'd like to bring up is, I'm starting to look for homes, and clearly, uh, as a first-time homebuyer, it's clearly expensive. There's clearly a lot going on, and I'm trying to figure out where I, as a person who does, does not own a car, will be able to actually live, bike to work, et cetera, and I'm currently finding myself kind of priced out of being in a 30-minute bikeable, uh, radius from downtown. So with this, I wanted to kind of discuss a little bit more on ADUs. I know that we have the pilot project going on. One thing that I kind of want to bring up is, as we're gonna be a second before we get to that residential phase, uh, I would like to see if there are any potential changes that could go on with making it so that ADUs can be, uh, more streamlined, past just what we're talking about, this pilot project, but actually putting that into action with the number of ADUs that we do have in Columbus. Clearly, they are positive. How can we retrofit existing spaces or allow places that allow, uh, currently allow garages to be infilled, uh, a little bit more rapidly? Uh, secondarily, I wanted to kind of talk about zoning districts. As we talk about the, uh, number of districts, how complicated we're being along those lines, I would like us to resist, uh, the push for so many sub-districts. Um, the Bexley, the one leading out towards Bexley being the initial concern for me, uh, as we talk about it, the issue there is mostly setbacks, and then we can have 12-story towers, but we can't have, uh, farmers' markets, pet care services, theaters, things along those lines. So, just trying to kind of figure out why we have some of these carves out, while they're, why are they necessary? Does the existing flexibility with contextual setbacks, uh, address some of these problems? I think you see the same thing as we allowed for Urban General 2, which I understand allows for a little bit of a less intense look to the area, and has some of those same use case restrictions, uh, that were like farmers' markets and such not being allowed, the difference between Urban General 1 and Urban General 2. Um, but we're talking about a matter of feet when you kind of factor in the differences between encroachments and setbacks. So, I'm curious if we could simplify those back into one, and I've got a proposal that I previously submitted on how to do that. Happy to talk more about it. Um, and the last thing that I'd want to kind of touch upon is, it would be great to see the map, the policy changes that are discussed tonight. Happy to kind of dig in, but I just really appreciate every member here that's working on it, people that are coming out to go and talk about how zoning impacts their community, so that we can have a more livable Columbus. So, thank you all so much. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Cape. I appreciate you being back for this update. I think, I don't want to speak for the folks administration. I, I think we are, um, as new districts are created, I think the default is not to create any additional sub-districts. I think we want these districts to be as applicable, um, and as many places that they can be without having to take some special considerations, but I think as we go from, you know, 4% of the city today is probably, is way less than 1% of the city, given what we're talking about. The, I think, once we go into future phases that are in double digits of percentage of the city, uh, we're gonna have to see how, um, those districts can be applied, and whether or not there's any special considerations that go along with it. But, just to let you know, I think the default generally is that we want to avoid that, because one of the things that, um, we have had in our zoning code for a long time is way too many districts in which it's very, very difficult for folks to have predictability that comes along with that. So, you know, if one of our goals is to simplify, you know, the zoning code itself, uh, avoiding those sub-district requirements is certainly something that, again, I'm speaking for myself, certainly not the administration at this point, but that we would, as a council, would like to avoid in order to make sure that, um, unless it's absolutely necessary, give some really special consideration, uh, that we're making this code as, as straightforward as it possibly can get.
And sir, could you give your, um, information to the staff member with the Zone In t-shirt back there?
Absolutely.
We'd like to update you on a few of the other issues that you raised, um, but we want to let out the speakers get an opportunity to speak, but we do have some updates on some of the things that you raised. If you would give your information to the lady in the back.
Of course, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Cape. You have, uh, one big ally, Councilmember Beatty, on the ADU front, so he's got some things that he's working with council and administration on, and trying to get closer to, I think, a lot of stuff you, that you've, you've talked to council before about, and certainly here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next speaker to come for council is Deanna Blake, or Bleek, and I, judging by the, the smile I got for your name wrong, so I apologize if you wouldn't mind letting me know that when you get to the podium, but welcome to council.
Thank you very much. My name is Deana Bealik. Um, thank you, President Protem Dorans, council members, and staff for being here tonight. Um, I reside at, uh, on Sinclair Road on Post Lake, just a few lots away from 161. Um, and overall, as many have said, I'm very, extremely supportive of the Zone in Columbus initiative, and very much agree that the 161 corridor is much in need of some revitalization. Um, I think it will be a great move for our community. Um, where I do have concerns over the proposed rezoning are those six parcels that Matthew Finnegan talked about previously. Um, these are on the very western edge of that 161 corridor. Um, and my concerns are due to conflicts with two of Zone in Columbus's stated, stated goals, uh, which I took directly from the website. The first is supporting growth that prioritizes both environmental and economic stability, and the second is to gu- guide the design and development of main streets, neighborhoods, and activity centers to support community goals while celebrating the unique character of our neighborhoods. So when it comes to environmental impact, um, as some other, uh, speakers have said previously, these parcels are directly adjacent to Post Lake, a 30-acre spring-fed lake that has been a hidden gem in Columbus since the early 1900s, and the proposed zoning would increase the, um, likelihood of environmental harm to the lake compared to the current zoning. Those single-family homes do act as a buffer to some of that commercial, uh, development that is already there along 161. Um, and so we're very concerned about the water quality of the lake, as well as losing the green space and the trees that help clean and protect the air and the water in the area. In terms of the unique character of our neighborhood, um, as I mentioned, it is a hidden gem. It has been home to 33 homes since 1945. Many of these homes are passed down from generation to generation because we live in a place that is like no other in the city of Columbus. Um, most lots are around an acre in size. All residents have access to the lake for fishing, swimming, and boating. Um, it is a private community that ensures the lake is a peaceful retreat. Allowing for high-density residential or commercial development would fundamentally change that environment. Um, also, we care deeply about where we live. Many of the folks that you see in the gallery here today are from, um, are my neighbors on Post Lake. Uh, we take it upon ourselves to clean up the railroad tracks on the west side of the lake every spring, to prevent litter from coming into the lake, and we also spearheaded action with the city to address serious health and safety issues proposed by a, um, that were posed by a homeless encampment that was directly adjacent to the lake and have had strong partnership with the city there. Um, so I respectfully request that the proposed rezoning be amended to exclude these six parcels, to protect the environmental stability of the area, and celebrate the unique character of our neighborhood as you intend to do through the Zone in Columbus initiative. Given the location at the very end of the 161 corridor, this change would have minimal, if any, impact on the overall goals of rezoning in the area, while preserving Post Lake for generations to come. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate you being here. Um, next speaker to come for council is Ms. Wendy Goldstein. Ms. Goldstein, welcome to council.
And you got it right. It was a 50/50 chance.
[laughing]
Good evening, council members. I'm Wendy Goldstein, and I live in the last two lots by the railroad tracks at the very west end of this rezoning area. I am behind a commercial property, and I've been a resident there for 15 years. My home has a deed restriction as a single-residence home, and a legal easement through the commercial property in front of me, which allows me the only access to my home, and four parking places. The living room of my home is the original log cabin on the lake dating before the turn of the century. I bought this unique property for all the reasons that are in our, um, opposition to rezoning these six lots, um, the lake, the wildlife, the community, the ecology of the watershed, and, to be honest, escaping the city, which is just 14 minutes away. Please come visit. I have an inclu- I've given you some pictures to give you a sense of what this lake is like. Those are from my lot looking south on the lake. Besides the reasons set forth in our man, our memorandum, I'd like to address something else. The proposed rezoning of these six residential family properties to a CAC would harm those property owners by turning their homes into non-conforming, pre-existing buildings. This classification will have long-term economic effects on us as property owners. My home is valued at about $700,000, and rezoning my two lots will have a negative effect on me being able to maintain or acquire insurance coverage. It'll also limit getting title insurance upon a sale, and furthermore, if my residence was damaged by a disaster such as fire, I could be prevented from being able to repair or rebuild because it is a non-conforming, pre-existing building. I have to ask, how is this different from the city declaring eminent domain? I know that's not your intent. Um, on another note, I have owned commercial property in Columbus for 25 years, and I know that there is not enough commercial utility on that end, our six lots, um, by rezoning these residential properties to a CAC. Even though on maps appears there is space for development, the dimensions, dimensions available after rezoning just do not make it more developable for cost-feasibility reasons. By adding our homes to the rezoning there, it's not a lot of potential for further development of the commercial buildings that already exist on 161. In conclusion, I support the rezoning of most of the 161 corridor. This tiny part of the proposal has more negative effects than positive. I believe that true transformation and development happens with the market and opportunities, not regulation. Please allow Penn Cater Edition to provide a value to the city by helping our six residential properties stay zoned as they currently are. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I did want to ask the city attorney to weigh in. This is a, a concern that we had heard when we went through the first phase regarding, uh, changing zoning of existing, uh, properties that had, you know, I'm thinking of Cleveland Avenue, for example, where we rezoned, and we restricted the audio-oriented businesses. Uh, there's a lot of tire shops, for example, on Cleveland Avenue, so there was a lot of concern from those business owners, in which we passed a rezoning for those parcels that would restrict the use of, of those parcels for that type of business. But they had similar concerns that, that you articulated regarding, um, you know, the non-conforming use, and I don't know, Mr. Monroe, if you want to speak to that?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Dorans. Uh, obviously, a lot of that deals with the allowable uses in the use table, which I think are being updated, uh, by staff with this update, as well for those types of establishments. So, um, yeah, the, obviously, um, if there are specific concerns, we're happy to review those on behalf of staff, on behalf of the department, in those rezoning applications, but, um, might be a little bit hypothetical right now, uh, other than the issues that we ran into with those auto-oriented businesses in phase one.
And certainly, the, the restriction of, even though a, a parcel may be given a mixed-use designation, a single-family house would still fit that designation. So, by virtue of it being a mixed-use designation that's been potentially proposed here, a single-family would not be a non-conforming use under that mixed-use designation. Is that?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
That wasn't clear in the definition. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next speaker to come for council is Mr. Marty Howe. Or, I'm sorry, Ms. Marty Howe. I apologize. I flipped a coin, and I, the last time I flipped a coin, I got it right with the prior speaker, and I got it wrong with you, so. I'm batting 500, so, uh...
Thank you all for having me speak tonight. Um, thank you for listening to me. Mine is all personal and emotional. Everybody that has spoken, my neighbors, have talked about, and we all agree. We, we are very impressed with what's going on. I am a business owner for 40 years in Clintonville. I raised three children in Clintonville. I was lucky enough to come to Sinclair Road 10 years ago with my grandson, and we have fished. He has ridden his mini bike. We have had wonderful neighbors. It's been a great, supportive community. Um, his friends come up now. They spend lots of time on the lake. Instead of being in the city or being at the malls and doing all the crazy stuff, they are actually up there learning about the lake, learning about biology, learning about, um, being a, a, a civic member of society. And I'm very proud of him for that. I'm very proud of my neighbors. I'm very proud of where I live. Um, I'm grateful for that neighborhood. I'm grateful for the things that is, um, that, that, that people have given to us. Um, and I'm not above bribing my grandson. I miss the, the, uh, egg hunts in the, in the yards. I miss the neighborhood, uh, 4th of July. I, I would miss all those things if, if they were not there. And even those six parcels at the north end of the lake, they're all part of our community. We're all a big neighborhood, and we love having, um, all of those things, and, uh, all the families that have grown up. And, and I, my grandchildren and their grandkids and, and kids are all a part of that community. Again, we, we support what's going on with the city, um, but I'm being selfish. I really want, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put $200 in eggs and, and give these kids an Easter egg hunt this weekend, so, um, I just want to, thank you again for listening to us all. Um, it's a, it's a wonderful community. It's a wonderful place to live, and we don't, we don't want to change that. We really don't. Not that we're being selfish, but we just don't want to change it. It's, it's a good place to live and grow and learn. Thank you so much.
Thank you for being here, and good luck with the egg hunts this weekend.
[inaudible]
Uh, next...
I'm 17 years old, so I'm a baby.
[laughing] I love that. Um, the next speaker we have to come for council is TJ Quakenbush. Welcome to council, sir.
Oh, man, I'm getting, striking out here. I was, I was real impressed with myself a little bit. Thank you for having us. Uh, I want to follow Marty's lead. Uh, you've heard what we feel is the downfalls of the rezoning, so I'm gonna play on your heartstrings. Uh, my name's TJ Quakenbush. Uh, I live on the north end of Post Lake, right off Sinclair Road. I'm a general manager of a large construction company here in town. 13 years ago, I moved to Columbus in search of a new opportunity professionally, a new chapter, and I can say without a doubt that Columbus has fulfilled that for me. A few years back, my girlfriend at the time told me about this mystery lake that was tucked away on Sinclair Road. We'd pass it often and wonder, what if, what if one day we could be a part of this hidden gem? Then one afternoon, we saw it. A simple, beautiful ranch nestled on the lake's edge, quietly calling out for someone to make it their home. 15 days later, we did just that. Miraculously, we were able to purchase the house, and on the same day, under the willow that brushes next to the water, I proposed to my fiancee, Ariel. Now, I know we're not here to discuss love stories, engagement rings, but we're here for zoning corridors, mixed-use designations, but I want to share this with you because I need you to understand what the lake truly is, what it means to us who live there. It isn't just real estate. It's community. It's our sanctuary. It's the backdrop of our milestones. This lake and community has surrounded, welcomed us to arms, and made us feel like we'd just moved. We found a home. And now I stand before you as someone who proudly represents the next generation of this lake, a steward of its beauty, its balance, its legacy, and I'm asking you from the deepest place of my heart, please consider us, this community, when making your decision about rezoning of six residential properties on the north end of the lake. This lake is more than a view. It's a delicate living habitat, not just for us, but for the wildlife, the ecosystem, and everything that thrives there. Changing this zoning would place a burden on this lake that I fear simply could not bear. I implore you, take the time to see this place, not just as parcels on the map, but as a beating heart of a community that would be forever changed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Uh, our last speaker to come for council this evening is Mr. Jim Maurer. Welcome to council, sir.
Good evening. My name's, uh, Jim Maurer. I've, um, lived on the lake for just over 20 years. Um, it's the, uh- It's the, myself and the other residents around the lake were really temporary custodians to this very unique Columbus neighborhood and like to see it stay that way. We've done, we work hard to take care of the lake in the 20 years that I've been there. We've done extensive erosion control. When we find that there's too much nitrogen in the lake, then we address that and repair that. We've had the OSU Extension Professor out to give us guidance on caring for the lake. My, I am the assistant scout master of a scout troop of 30 girls, and they, they come out to the lake, they camp out, spend the night, they swim and kayak, and have even earned their fishing merit badge at the lake. I'm also a real estate agent. In the 20 years that I've been there, there's been three new homes built on the lake from the, some of the lots that were still available. It's a, you know, very desirable place to, to live. If any homes or lots come available, there's a long line of people interested in purchasing those or developing those lots. The residential lots around the lake are an important buffer around the lake to maintain its, you know, the condition of it, and I would ask you that you keep it that way, keep those residential lots residential, and not make them commercial. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maurer. Appreciate your comments. As I mentioned, that was the final public speaker to come for council tonight. Want to thank those that took the time. And before we conclude, I appreciate the intensity of folks from this community to talk about these six individual parcels. Mr. Finnegan and I have corresponded a little bit back and forth, and one thing I wanted to make very clear to folks is that, you know, this is an update to the first phase of Zone In, so we're talking about a small, small update. The intention behind Zone In is to rezone the entire city. We will modernize our zoning code across every parcel in the city of Columbus in the coming years, and that is because we have land use policies that literally go back to the 1950s. And, you know, we could not be further away from what the reality of Columbus is right now compared to when those land use policies were put into place in the 1950s. It is important, vitally important to the future of Columbus, that we undertake this work. So this update only allows us to have these six new zoning districts that were created last year. If those six zoning districts don't fit these six parcels, it is possible for us to remove those. It's going to be a deliberation between our folks in the administration and certainly this body about whether or not that is appropriate or unappropriate. But one of the things I just want to make sure that folks understand is that we will be rezoning this city, and if there's a future district that gets created that's more appropriate for those parcels or for others, that's certainly something that we can and should explore, because as we've talked about here tonight, one of the points of this is not only to modernize this zoning code, but try to make that modern zoning code also fit the realities of Columbus today, but in the decades to come. And that's also thinking about what does responsible development look like in a community that currently exists in 2025, while also considering what Columbus is going to look like in 2050. So want to thank folks for their intense engagement on this. We certainly have heard you, and we'll continue to hear from folks as we continue through this 60-day public comment period. But I did just want to make sure that we're, we started this process well over a year ago, and as long as I am the chairperson of the zoning committee, whether folks like what I have to say or don't like what I have to say, I try to be as transparent as I possibly can. And it makes, it makes the process, I believe, better to make sure that we're being transparent with folks, even when we may disagree about something. So I want to thank people for taking the time and attention to engage with this body. And again, if you did not pay attention to last year, we went through this during Phase One, we did make changes to that proposal based upon that community feedback. We're also here with this proposal because we, community leaders in the Northland area, say we want in sooner than later. So I like to think that this council has demonstrated a number of different ways that we can and will be responsive to folks when they engage with us on these matters. So again, certainly want to thank the entire team from the administration for being here tonight and for the work, not only in this proposal, but as we continue to look at other zoning reform efforts that can go along with this in the future. All the materials from tonight's hearing are available in hard copy by the door in the back. If you would like to have an electronic copy of that, please contact my office. I can be reached at ra.dorans@columbus.gov. If you're looking for more information about the Zone In initiative generally, you can get on, again, columbus.gov/zoningupdate. If you would like to submit a comment particular to a parcel, that's the best place to do so. But again, if you have additional public comment you'd like to provide, you can do so either by emailing me through that website. And again, we will have another public hearing on May 10th, right back here in council chambers, that will be in part to review that public feedback and then to consider whether or not we will be making any changes based upon that feedback. So I want to pause and see if any of my council colleagues have any closing comments they'd like to make. Seeing none, again, I want to thank folks for being here tonight and wish you a good evening. Have a good night.